Yes.
Alsa.
Recording in progress.
This is the Diamond Regional School Committee meeting for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Need a roll call?
Mr. Jennings?
Here.
Mr. DiBiaseo?
Here.
Mr. Beegan?
Here.
Ms. Menard?
Here.
Father Jay?
Here.
Dr. Nair?
Yes.
We have a call. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, if any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of a public meeting, a member of the public who wishes to record a meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the reasonable requirements regarding audio or video equipment. Established by the chair is not to interfere with the meeting. Does anyone here?
Mr. Matt.
Okay, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the April second, two thousand?
So.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. One point four, it's the election of school committee offices and subcommittees. So, we need a...
Subcommittee Chairman?
Chairman.
All right, do I make a motion for all to continue his good work?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Well, thank you again, everyone.
Oh, thank you.
Next, we need a vice chairman. Anybody? Is that?
I'm gonna make a motion for Mr. DiBiaseo, Vice Chairman.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, next treasurer. We have Joe Bruyam.
For her, we have to hold her in first. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Assistant Treasurer, we have Jeff Beegan.
I'll make that motion, I'm sorry.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Secretary, Helene Ness.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, and as far as the subcommittees, we'll discuss them and see if there's some changes we're gonna make to that. So, I will get in touch with everybody and then I will let Helene know of any changes.
Sure.
One point five student report, we have...
Yes, so unfortunately, Helene cannot join us today, but I do have her report. And on behalf of the students, she states that as the year winds down, seniors are looking forward to prom in Middletown, Rhode Island, and graduation. Boys' baseball is doing very well this year, nine and one, and has clinched the Mayflower championship. Softball is seven and four, and pushing towards a state tournament berth. Boys' track finished the regular season at eight and one, and many athletes are moving on to state competitions. Girls' track took the Mayflower League championship and went undefeated at nine and up. Club volleyball is offering an opportunity to expand our athletic offerings. We have many participating. Girls' tennis is looking to qualify for states, and at four and five last week, a student voice forum took place where students discussed with Mr. Rabello, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Silva, Mr. Santos, and Mr. Marzison ideas to improve the student experience. The I am more promotional video to address discrimination was released. Some great ideas were expressed from students to develop this into our school culture. Skills USA once again came home with multiple medals, which we'll hear about later today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have two representatives here of the DECA organization who would like to address the committee, and I thought it fitting that it would be along with the student report. We have two members over here, we have Elizabeth Kinane, and we have Inez Hideris. Would you please step forward?
Hello, we just wanted to thank you on behalf of Diamond DECA for your support this year, for allowing us to participate in all that we've participated in. And a special thank you to Mr. Kitchen and Mr. DiBiaseo for your help in judging competitions this year.
Great, thank you.
In the first time in seven years, we've had the largest Diamond DECA membership. We've had a hundred and thirty-three students. In districts, we had a lot of people in top ten, a lot of new people making top ten, which was really, really cool. And we went out to states, and unfortunately, individually, we didn't make it, but in our SPEs, our school-based enterprises, they were gold certification, and we made it to nationals in Anaheim. We met people from Colombia, Germany, Florida, all kinds of places, not just in the United States. And we actually traded pins with them, which is kind of like a way to interact with people and get to know where they're from and get to know how they run Diamond DECA and how we run it. So, we are gonna pass these out as a little token of appreciation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, we appreciate it here. Great. Thank you very much.
Very good. How did you like California?
It was cool.
Yeah. How was the competition with what you bought with pitch?
So, this was my second time competing in the national level for the school-based enterprise. It was just like last year. The only difference was that I felt more laid back, because I was used to the craziness. There's a lot of people, I think maybe twenty-three thousand?
Whoa.
Is that...
That's how many?
What did they hold?
Yeah, it's about that, yeah.
They held it at a convention center in Anaheim, California. It was about ten-minute, fifteen-minute walk from our hotel, so we just walked to the convention center as a group, and then we could begin our competition.
Good.
And the members of the committee, just a little personal stuff, because we got a packed agenda. Elizabeth Kinane, Elizabeth Kinane, right here, she was Diamond's representative in Worcester at the Outstanding Vocational Student Award this year. And it was a very memorable night, as I remember, that's the whole family I was introduced to, and she remembers it for other reasons, but who will fleet unset. And Inez was one of our track stars this year, as was Liz. But why don't you tell the committee members where you're off to next year? Okay. I'm not putting you on the spot, you do have a place to go.
Yes, I'm going to Massachusetts Maritime.
You're a great candidate.
Very good.
I don't know where I'm going, to be honest with you. FAFSA is delayed, so they pushed everything back, and because FAFSA is delayed, I haven't chose between either Wheaton College or Bridgewater University, because I want my major to be elementary education, but the concentrations are different for each college. So, I'm just trying to finalize that and hopefully move forward with either BSU or Wheaton.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a great night. Appreciate your time very much.
Thank you.
Do you want us to... Do you want us to pull these?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to one point six, and Mr. Nambu, do we have anybody signed up?
We do not.
We have two point O unfinished bills, we don't have any. Three point one MSBA's school billing committee update, Mr. DiBiaseo?
Yes. All right. The project update for May, contracts have been issued for approximately eighty-five percent of the direct construction costs. Bidders, bidding continuing for the remaining portions of the scope totaling approximately thirty million dollars still to be bid out. Additionally, coordination with equipment is ongoing with continuing into construction. FFNE coordination is ongoing. Final selections will be made over the next several months. Construction contract administrative services are underway to ensure the work is complete per contract documents. In the construction phase, as you saw in the video we had earlier, and look at Sauna website for the, anybody watching, but the earthwork and soil processing and replacement is nearing completion within the billing footprint. On-site temporary facilities are in place for the full project staff to mobilize and have a larger onsite presence as more trades start in. I believe the only thing we're waiting for is the internet, correct?
Yes.
And the trailers. Concrete, as we saw in the video as well, foundations have started, and the high wall that forms the lower level of the front of the building, this wall is approximately twenty-two feet high, and has a large footing to retain the earth and the road above. Utility coordination with the utility companies is ongoing and progressing to support the project's needs. Electrical has been completed, the new temporary pole work around the site, so they ran all done to the trailers. The project is trending on budget at this time, with the storage outbuilding and the athletic facilities remaining in the project. Several large packages will be bid in the coming months, including demolition, abatement, and landscape, which are all three big factors for the remaining of the project. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Nothing at all?
Okay.
It's good to see some work going on down there, other than dirt moving around.
Yeah. We hope the target, the target is to start seeing steel by the fall, sometime this fall, November, I believe is the target.
You'll probably see some in, yeah, August, September, we'll start to see.
Yeah, the trucks will stop rolling in this summer with the steel, the steel being delivered, so.
Great, thank you. Next would be the payment of ban, the school feasibility.
As we did in the last two years, this is the feasibility study, the portion of which the district had then borrowed seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So therefore, next month, the balance of that ban is due at three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That'll be paid out of our excess and deficiency and any revenues, miscellaneous revenues that we may have earned this year. Shipless materials, and all like some rebates that we have to refund, but the miscellaneous revenue that we can offset the A D expenditure, we will. That will conclude the obligation for feasibility. So, we have one point five million budgeted in the project. You borrowed seven hundred fifty thousand to pay for that, based on the ratios that you were getting at the time. I believe we spent about one point four, and the obligation's due, so we've spent. Although the last two years, we've paid like a hundred and seventy-two thousand and change, this would wrap it up, and then when we start looking at construction borrowings, it'll be separate. So, we'll get it off books, and we have the money in the A D miscellaneous.
In this year's budget?
In this year's certified.
Certified.
Certified cash.
Yep.
All right, the recommendation is to allow the district treasurer to pay three hundred and seventy-five thousand on the principal, to pay down the debt obligation as well as the interest, fees, and final payment of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on...
This one's a station.
No for the school feasibility of the excess and deficiency funds, miscellaneous revenue earned during two thousand twenty-four.
Make that, make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next is the MSBA project expansion, Mr. Kitchen?
First, the first invoices from Colliers from last month, March, is for one hundred forty-three thousand six six five point five seven. The detailed breakdown's on the back of that bill, if you want to take a look at it, on the hours. Also from Colliers for the month of April is one hundred sixty-five thousand six ninety, excuse me, one hundred sixty-five thousand six eighty-nine and seventy-five cents. For KBA, they are no longer in the nine hundred thousands, they are at one hundred and fifteen thousand five thirty-seven. And their backup is behind that also. The AIA for the Suffolk for the work done in the month of March, April, April, I apologize, is three million, two hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred twenty dollars and forty-one cents.
All right, the recommendation is to approve the MSBA project expansion as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Three point one other matters B personnel, Mr. Tep.
Yes, there's multiple pages here, and not to belabor it, but the first one is just appointments, either for after-school programs, as well as the network administrator who's coming to Diamond. You see what the work that's being done after school and also special projects that are going on, and those are the people who have been appointed to that. Second, the reappointments, and this is traditional, of those who have completed one year of service and are continuing, those who have completed one year of service and are on a waiver and are returning. On the next page, has completed one year, a waiver or emergency license. And again, waivers and emergency license do not count towards professional status. And they've all received written notice from myself indicating where they are and what they need to do in order to move it to the next level. Completing two years, there are listed people there, and they are recommended to return. Completing two years still on a waiver, we have two individuals there. Completed four years, and this is kind of an interesting situation, that the teacher listed here, he is coming back, and he's been delayed only because they haven't issued the, or they have not given the hands-on part of his. He is a programming and web individual, and they just haven't offered the test yet. They are offering it soon, but it's been extended now by the Department of Education, and he is still good. Completing four years, two licenses, two years of license, but still not professional status yet, is one individual. And for professional status, meaning they have completed three successful years of teaching here at Diamond, and they have now attained what used to be called tenure in the old days, they are now professionally standing individuals. And we have those. We have had two resignations. One is an in-house person, but that was from a MCAS prep program, where she did not want to do that anymore, and we've had a resignation also of an LPL instructor. Then we have anticipated vacancies, as you can see there, and that will bring you up to speed on where we are in personnel.
Great.
The, that instructor, is that one of the new ones that we just hired?
Yes. Yes, she has returned to work in the hospital.
Okay, great, thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Three point one other matters C, student travel?
We do have three of that here. The first one is the auto-coaching program submitted an out-of-state travel request, field trip to Newport Car Museum in Portsmouth, Rhode Island on May the twenty-fourth. Field trip cost is funded by the auto-coaching budget, and the recommendation is to approve that for the auto-coaching program for an out-of-state field trip to the Newport Car Museum from nine thirty a.m. to two fifteen on May twenty-fourth.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you. The photography club has submitted an after-hours student travel request for a field trip to Martha's Vineyard, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, seven thirty to six thirty p.m. It's beyond the scope of the school day. Again, field trip cost will be funded by the club and all the students, and the recommendation is to approve this for the photography club for field trips to Martha's Vineyard. Hours are approximately seven thirty a.m. to six thirty p.m.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Need a second? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
And the last one, although there is something coming up a little later on, but the last one on this paper is the Skills USA advisors, Debbie John and Mitch. They've submitted an out-of-state travel request for students to attend the Skills USA National Competition, June twenty-fourth to June twenty-ninth in Atlanta, Georgia. Departure and return times have not been determined yet, as airlines are still, they're still booking the flights, which is all booked, not through the school. We go through Skills USA Massachusetts, who is in total charge of booking all the flights, they make all the travel arrangements. And the recommendation is to approve the student travel request, June twenty-fourth, June twenty-ninth, Skills USA traveling to Atlanta, Georgia.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And do you?
Three point one other matters D, acceptance of gifts.
Yes, graciously, the Gene Haas Foundation has awarded a grant totaling twenty thousand dollars to the advanced manufacturing department, machine shop. The funds will be used to support students participating in Skills USA, scholarship for students who own mechanical engineering for the fall semester, and also for the purchase of some tools for students who are going directly into trade. And the recommendation is to accept the grant by Gene Haas Foundation totaling twenty thousand dollars.
Need a motion to accept?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Three point two other matters B, use of facilities.
For the use of facilities, we do have two requests. The first one is from the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators, otherwise known as MAVA. They've submitted a request, as they've done in the past, to utilize a classroom for their extended campus educational consortium program on Monday starting May twentieth and just ending July seventh from four p.m. until six thirty p.m., and to waive all use of facility fees. And the recommendation is to approve that request from MAVA for the use of a classroom, May twentieth through July seventh, four p.m. to six thirty p.m., and to waive all use of facilities fees.
Need a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And last is that the National Haas Society has submitted a request to use the auditorium, cafeteria, and room two fifty-one tomorrow, Wednesday, May fifteenth, from five to seven thirty for the induction ceremony and to waive all use of facility fees. The recommendation is to approve the request of the NHS to use the auditorium cafeteria room two fifty-one tomorrow, Wednesday, May fifteenth, from five to seven thirty for the p.m. for the induction ceremony and to waive all use of facility fees.
Need a motion?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for that.
Three point one other matters F, discussion of possible creation of social organization, Mr. Nambu?
Yes, to set that up, Mrs. Pacico is here tonight. The committee prior though, agreed as we see, what is on the following pages. This comes as a request from Mrs. Pacico as Director of the Special Education Department here at Diamond on the utilization of funds that have been put aside for this, but I'll let Mrs. Pacico describe what it is for and how it will be utilized to benefit our students.
Hi. As Mr. Brentley had indicated, I am, along with Mr. Silva, the Director, the Interim Director of Guidance has also part of this proposal. Because in addition to the creation of a social worker that would be dedicated just to the department, to the special ed department, we are also requesting that we continue to retain the school adjustment counselor that is also, that funding was done by S R and that is coming to an end this year. So, the hope is that the social worker would be dedicated to the special ed department as part of the special ed team. Currently, the school adjustment counselor is part of the guidance department, and they report to the Director of Guidance. Currently, the, one of the school adjustment counselors does some of her time, is probably about half of her time, on guidance issues as well as servicing students with disabilities. As you can see from the handout, I think was part of your packet, currently, our students with disabilities numbers have increased. Our students with social emotional needs have also increased from two, from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four. Just this week alone, I've had routine meetings from children that are coming from social emotional classrooms, as well as from alternative settings, who are being provided services, therapeutic services. So, I think one of the goals is to try to continue to provide some sort of support in that manner. The difference between the school adjustment counselor and the social worker is that, like I said, the school adjustment counselor is part of the guidance department, this person would be fully part of the special ed department. It is my hope that this person would also be pushing into the classrooms and providing services and some interventions within the classroom as needed, as well as conducting some home visits if necessary, and really doing a lot more wraparound services.
That's kind of broad, you broad a lot, a lot.
But it is our hope that the guidance department will continue to retain two school adjustment counselors, and that we have an additional.
What's the difference between this and adjustment counselor?
Licenseur-wise, they're the same. The school adjustment counselor does more school-based stuff, and they report to the Director of Guidance. The social worker would be more, would be reporting to the Director of Special Education and do more therapeutic and be more versed in special education laws. Goal development regarding I E Ps, just more on the special ed regulations, where right now, the school adjustment counselor does not.
So, you being a special ed coordinator, you don't work with the adjustment counselors?
The current school adjustment counselor reports to the Director of Guidance.
I know they report to them, you're a special ed director, you don't talk to these people at all and work with them on any issues with people who have...
One of our employees spends half the time, not even half the time, for special ed, because she's also being pulled to do softball guidance. So, this person would be clearly dedicated just to the special ed and the students with disabilities.
Judgment counselor handles I E Ps and they work with kids, how they work with the five oh fours and everything else with kids?
So, the other piece of this is that if the guidance department retains the two school adjustment counselors, they would have a little bit more oversight in the number of five oh fours, because that's also increasing. As you can see from the numbers, from two thousand twenty-one, they had eighty-seven students on five oh fours, in two thousand twenty-four, they're up to a hundred and thirty-one.
Wow, that's a lot.
It's a lot, I mean...
It makes you fifty.
Yeah, and it's continuing to rise, so just like the students with disabilities numbers are also increasing, so are their needs.
You don't...
No.
Yeah.
Who currently does this work right now?
The school...
In, in special ed?
The school adjustment counselor who is not going to be returning.
The school adjustment counselor works under guidance.
Under guidance, the school adjustment counselors in the...
Does all of this work that you want the social worker to do?
Correct, and, and more. So, right now, I created a job description that has additional duties that's beyond what the current school adjustment counselor job description has. It's, it's a...
So, if we hired, let's say we hired the adjustment counselor we have?
Yeah, they would...
So, even if they, could they continue doing what they're doing now?
There's not enough time. The needs of the students are, are, are just, there's just more needs, Mr. DiBiaseo. As you can see from the numbers, just the five oh fours alone need oversight, and the two school adjustment counselors, they also would be, the school adjustment counselors would also be running groups as well, the two school adjustment counselors, if they're retained for the guidance office and the hiring of a separate social worker.
Mr. Chairman, we're not approving this tonight, this is just for knowledge.
Right now, I, I, I wouldn't be supporting it right now for approval.
How many people currently work in special ed who are not teachers, sort of the administration of special ed?
And the Director of Special Ed, and then there's the team chair.
Then no other, no one else works in special ed?
You have no other counselors?
They're all, no, they're all teachers. There is no one else, besides that school adjustment counselor who reports to the Director of Guidance, and she right now has a free flow of providing direct services to about thirty students with disabilities, in addition to some additional five oh fours that she's also carrying. And then you've got the other school adjustment counselor who also has free flows.
I think Father Jane might be asking, I'm not speaking for him, but don't we have the special ed teachers, as you say, who do they report to?
The special ed teachers report to the Assistant Principal, Academical Affairs, and the Principal.
But are they working, they're working with all the kids who have five oh fours and everything else, correct? What are they working with? What do special ed teachers do, educate them?
Oh, I understand.
Thank you.
I just don't want, I just don't want people to think that we only have two people who are overseeing our special ed department. We have special ed teachers, we have, you know...
Special ed teacher has a lot to do. The guy, the adjustment counselor is absolutely important for these kids.
Absolutely, I'm not, we're not saying...
If you only have one adjustment counselor, for how many special ed kids?
So, we have one school adjustment counselor in the guidance office, the other, the other school adjustment counselor is split between guidance and special ed.
So...
So, the numbers are actually in your, in your handout.
Okay.
But that's specific, it's, you'll see, the numbers actually go for the amount of students in the school.
Correct.
What's our, I mean, we have fourteen hundred and fifty in the school, what's our ratio of special education to that? I mean, what do, how many special education students do we have, on average?
Right now, I have a hundred and sixty.
A hundred and sixty, so we're, if we have two, we're one to eighty students versus one to seven hundred and twenty-five is what we're showing here. Reality, if we look at the special population, if we look at the special population...
If we don't hire the second adjustment counselor, it's one to fourteen fifty.
I'm not saying not hire, not hiring the second.
But no, it's not one to fourteen fifty, it's...
If you don't hire a second adjustment...
Father, we've got two.
Yeah.
The adjustment counselor.
We have two right now, we're looking at a third.
The other one, the other one that's a vacancy, that's a third.
That's not, that's a third.
She's saying a hundred and sixty need the service.
No, Kayla, Kayla is your adjustment counselor.
No.
You don't need to, we have one school adjustment counselor, which paid out of Title I. Yep. We have another school adjustment counselor who's currently paid off, the grant is expiring. We do have funding in guidance that can cover a position.
So, we're looking to bring in a second?
Yes.
If we don't, then we keep it fourteen fifty to one.
There is...
No, no, that's not true. It's one to a hundred and sixty. Though there may be fourteen, one thousand four hundred and fifty students, she's saying only a hundred and sixty require that need.
She's almost special ed. So, right now, we have two adjustment counselors, but we also, also, it's easier to look at the historical portion, but right now, for the current year, the funding that we have right now, we have a school adjustment counselor that's paid from the S R grant, which handles special ed kids and some groups, correct?
Groups, and she's doing that stuff for guidance.
All right, and then we also have a school adjustment counselor who handles five oh fours and other issues as they come up. We also have... We also have contracted services for balanced learning. We'll do small groups, individual meetings, and collaborative sessions with teams. We also have online services through Cotwell.
Is that continuing next year?
Cotwell is not, because I shouldn't say that, Cotwell may not unless we put it into Title One.
In balanced learning?
Balanced learning, we did put a placeholder inside the current guidance budget, but if you want to backfill the school adjustment counselor, we'll displace that.
So it's not all of those, it's one or the other?
It's one or the other on that one.
So the question is, so right now we have.
Inside, inside the two forty grant, there is funding for another position. Whether you want to call it a social worker, you want to call it a school adjustment counselor, however you want to handle the special ed, there is money in it. So it's a matter of, I guess, job description and who they're answering to. So the social worker will answer to the Director of Special Education and handle all special ed kids and the school adjustment counselors, both the school adjustment counselors will answer to the Director of Guidance.
Let me ask this again, so when the grant runs out?
Yes.
We have one adjustment counselor, right?
Yes.
You have one in the budget, yes.
One in the budget.
Yeah.
So it's fourteen hundred and fifty to one.
But you also have funding to backfill.
It's not an answer, I'm talking about funding, but we have one adjustment counselor when that ends.
When that ends, when that ends, correct.
So the question is, so.
No, in the budget you have two, because I did put one in for two forty, out of the two forty grant.
So when that ends, we still have two, so that was the third.
That, that continues.
For fourteen hundred kids.
So, so it's really what you'll either lose is the contracted services or backfill it with a position. That's your choice, I mean, you have, you have X amount of money there, I think, I had one, sixty thousand.
I personally would rather hire someone.
We have this during the budget.
Yeah, I'd rather hire an adjustment counselor who's here full time and not someone who's just sending in a team, right? I'd rather have a person be hired that works for Diamond, contracted service. But we're looking at, you're asking for both.
So the.
A second adjustment counselor for guidance and a social worker.
Right, because Mr. Silva wasn't unable to be here and, and part of the goal is that the second adjustment counselor for guidance would be running the groups and, and all of that, as you're discussing having actually someone onsite as opposed to contracting it out.
That's my own personal preference.
So in, in reality, we could hire two adjustment counselors.
Yep. You have a saying?
You can hire. Depends on the terminology you want to use, you want to hire adjustment counselors or you want to hire like an adjustment counselor and a social worker.
But essentially, it's really the same.
The, the difference is the current job description for the school adjustment counselor has them reporting to the Director of Guidance, they're, they're, they're part of the guidance department, which is the reason why I went with a social worker and added additional duties that are not in the school adjustment counselor's job description. That's the difference.
It'll be more in alliance to you, which is what, would be more advantageous.
Right, and that, right, and that. And that person would just be focusing on special ed regulations and the laws and, and the needs of the students. Because part of the work that I want the social worker to do is also to do, um, intervention work, doing, um, restorative justice work. We've got a lot of, a lot of our students with disabilities, the data will show, are getting themselves into trouble, so I need someone that's going to focus on that work with those children.
Actually, that's a school adjustment counselor, Joe.
It is.
It's just, it's just, it's, it's all in the wording that's been on it.
Yeah, it's all in the wording.
It's, it's the same, it's just that the job description that is currently in place does not have all of the duties and objectives that the social worker that I'm looking for for special ed, that one is.
One, one may be more in alliance or in accordance to the guidance, where you like to have one more in accordance to the special ed.
Special ed regulations and their compliance.
But you know what, I, I think the ideal thing would be to change the job description.
Which is, which is designated to do.
Can I, uh, can I make a motion?
I just want to go with two adjustments, we, we can, right now we're only dealing with this. Later on, we'll deal with.
So, so right now, we still have two, correct?
We can hire, yes, we can hire, we can.
And our third one is the grant that's ending?
Yes, we can backfill the position. If you wanted to hire a third school adjustment counselor, it would be paid out of two forty grant, similar to the social worker. It doesn't, it's, it's really.
Is there interest of the person who's ending to stay?
I would imagine so.
Yeah.
So.
They're saying they're already versed in the situation, nothing is going on.
So the, the, the matter of the funding source is basically, who's, who's the driver? If you use the two forty grant on the I D A grant, it's a special ed grant, they can only serve as special ed kids.
Correct.
So if you hire a school adjustment counselor or a social worker and it's paid from the two forty, they can only serve as special needs students. So you can split it, you can do a point five and a point five, you can do, however we want to do it, it's a, it's. What Mrs. Pacico is, I think, trying to say is if you hire the social worker, that person will work for her. If you, it'll be paid, it can only serve as special ed kids. If you hire a school adjustment counselor and it's paid out of two forty, they can only handle special ed students again, but they will work for guidance.
Mr. Bentley, what do you think? Mr. Bentley, what do you, what do you?
On the services side, we need this, we need the people in place for the services. Uh, the students in the building are more needy, um, I'm just playing more needy. The way that it is, it's all in the wording of where the grant's coming from. Paul just said it very plainly, so I don't want to repeat that. But if the money is going to be used out of a special, out, out of funding source, okay, the two forty fund, you've heard it called that, then that particular person can only serve as special ed students. If the person is called social worker, it belongs to the Director of Ga- uh, Special Ed Director. And don't forget, we're working with special ed students. If we call it a, the school adjustment counselor, then that person actually works for.
The entire body.
They're, well, works for the Director of Guidance, but can still only serve as special ed. So there would have to be some kind of liaison, uh, between the offices to make sure that that is information is transferring over to special ed.
We have a special ed subcommittee. We, we could send it over to the subcommittee.
I actually think that, keeping in mind that I fully support having the services for students. Okay, I always will do that, okay?
We all do.
This is a tricky part of how to break that out. I think that if it goes to subcommittee, first of all, I don't want it to die, but I think it has to be hashed out as to exactly how it's going to go down.
I don't know if this committee, can they authorize the subcommittee to make the election of whether it's a social worker or a school adjustment counselor?
Or can they make a recommendation?
If you don't, I, I, the only reason is you've got to post this and you don't post it in June, then, and you may be a little further out, so if the subcommittee meets before the next meeting, they can actually make the recommendation, we can post for the job, start the process, and then by June you'll be matifying the selection, I guess. I don't want to just hold back, this is the time to be posting positions. Because, because of all this federal money's going away, there are going to be qualified candidates out there.
Okay, Mr. Getch, what, what? I'm not understanding this totally, I understand what you. So, so you have funding, you need authorization from the school committee number one to fund the school? No, no, I know, but what about the one you already have funded for a school adjustment counselor?
That should follow.
So you're posting that anyhow?
We should.
Alright, so are they, are you looking for their guidance on that one too? I'm just starting there.
If they should choose, so, yes.
Alright, so, so that's what I'm trying to understand, so first of all, you have that one that Mr. Kitchen said you're either going to have the, the.
Contracted services.
The contracted services or a school adjustment counselor. So I think the school committee tonight can say, you're not going to have contracted services on that one issue, not going to have contracted services, go ahead, Mr. Kitchen, Mr. Bentley, Mr. Mr. Labello, post for that school adjustment counselor, you can do that. And then the second one, if you, I don't think that they can have a subcommittee say, okay, because somebody, I think the full school committee has to approve the job description.
Okay.
I, I, I get your point, I think they have to do the full job description.
I'd like to, I'd like to wait for Mr. Menard to come back in, she just stepped out.
But I think you can do that in a two, like a two step process.
We, we have that executive session for the, uh, school adjustment counselor?
Well, technically.
The adjustment counselor, the.
The, the school adjustment counselor can be discussed under, under the, uh, under the, uh, D T A negotiations.
Alright.
Um, but the only thing is, is we have to, then we're going to have to keep this article open if you do tend to vote in any way.
Come back out and vote.
If you want to have a vote to, to have the administration add it ties and post at least the school adjustment counselor and displace the, the contracted services, at least that.
As it stands, where we are right now is just for a social worker, so we couldn't even rule on the school adjustment counselor under, under this.
Um, well, it's all within that proposal, you may be able to.
Because it just says, um.
I think we can post for that.
Yeah, because it's already there, right?
We already have the job description, we have the funding, so we'll post it here.
Yeah, we don't have a job description for a social worker. We have it in front of us right now, but it's not, has not been approved.
Right.
I think, I think the social worker, the job description exists, the funding exists.
For what?
For the school adjustment counselor.
Right.
So therefore, I think we can post that, that it's not, because we do have adequate funding in next year's budget.
I'm, I'm all for.
And it's in guidance.
If we're losing one, I want it, I'd rather keep it.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to lose one.
Oh, yeah.
And again, that, to understand, in fact, current person that's in there, it's because the funding source comes to an end on June thirtieth.
Is there a way of funding? I say we hired two adjustment counselors.
Yep.
And one of them worked half of their time with special ed, because the two forty grant, he used to pay half their salary.
Yes.
Okay. Or could hire more of all adjustment counselors?
That gives a little more.
They have to have the funding in, in, in the, the, uh, foundation budget, right? She has, Debbie has enough in her account, a pre-split, a point five split.
Point five, point five, you'd have it.
Well, would you have the money?
Yeah.
Okay, so can we, that's what I'm saying, because they have to be half from Debbie's, uh, grant and Kitchen would have to find the other.
Can we, can we make that motion that, under this, under, uh, under three point oh? Or do we have, uh, three point one, excuse me? Or do we have to wait till?
See, the wording, the wording on this one is the social worker position.
But I think, Mr. Chairman, if, if, if in the course of this discussion.
If we can approve.
In the course of this discussion, if you wanted to, and I'm just, this is hypothetical, based on what Father Jay just said. Based on, based on the discussion of the social worker position, if, if the decision of the school committee is to go and say they want to have Mr. Kitchen, excuse me, I apologize, the administration, uh, posts the, the, um, school adjustment counselor and displace contracted services, number one, and number two, create a, a third school adjustment counselor, if I remember, if I'm getting this right, fifty percent paid for by, um, Mrs. Pacico's grant.
They'd both have to be paid, split fifty fifty.
Why both?
Because you wouldn't, you wouldn't have enough inside your, your appropriation.
So the vast.
No, the two forty has enough for a full body and the, uh, regular appropriation has enough for a full body. So depending on how you want them to service, but if you want the one individual to continue just servicing special ed students, that person will be assigned to the special ed.
But you can split them half and half.
But you can split them half and half.
Again, you got one and one or, or two halves.
At the end of the day, you have both S A Cs, it'd be, and both would be answering to the Director of Guidance and working with the special ed half the time.
Mr. Chairman, if we can under this, uh, three point one, I'd like to second, uh, Father Jay's proposal for the two adjustment counselors.
I suppose I was just asking a question, but.
Well, I thought you made a, I thought you made a motion on that, Mr. Jay.
Did I?
Yeah.
I, I would definitely rather see.
Do you want to make that motion?
I would rather see a full time employee at a contracted service.
Yes, absolutely. So I'll, I'll make the motion that we have, uh, that we, if you like on this one.
If, if, if we.
I think because it's, because it's developed out of the context of this discussion, I think, I think we're okay.
Okay, so I'll make the motion for two adjustment counselors and, um, the, uh, to answer to the, uh, Director of Guidance and the proportion according to the, uh, the grants that we get, um, the percentage would be worked out between the, uh, head of guidance and the, uh, special needs quality.
So we're posting for one, two.
I'm at a loss, I'm sorry.
I think, I think, Devin, that's what I'm going to ask, so in other words.
We're posting for one of those thing and, and then the one.
Okay, so you're going to have two. You want fifty fifty, meaning, ha- both of them are going to work half the time for Deb? They're going to be assigned to guidance, but they're both going to work half the time with special, with special ed.
You're going to have two different people working with students with disabilities.
Oh, that's crazy.
Can, can we just go with, um, one full time adjustment and then the yellow one do fifty fifty?
Well, then he doesn't have the funding, because he has that one point five of funding.
Can we find the funding somewhere?
He needs the fun.
We can find it.
We can find it.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I, it's not.
Let's do it.
Not me, one person would be doing it, right? The one person would work half and half.
Right, just one, not the two.
No.
I think more S A Cs, right?
Yep, so I'll make that motion that we, uh.
Where the second is still lost. Me too.
You're going to get it, there's going to be adjustment counselors assigned, they've decided the time to vote. And then decide this again.
But that does definitely help me. I'm, I'm just at a, I'm just at a confusion.
What do you conclude?
They're looking at just hiring adjustment counselors and not, are you not going to take up the social worker?
Not without a social worker, no.
And not take up the social worker. So if, if you hire a so, if you, if we hire a school adjustment counselor, we can assign one out of the two forty grant, they'll service all special ed students.
Good, perfect.
They will work with guidance though, because they'll, they'll, they'll be underneath guidance, so that, that person will work with Debbie and Eric. The other social, the other school adjustment counselor will solely work with, I mean, work for anybody, not just regular appropriation. They can work with the overflow of special ed kids if there is need, they can work with the five oh fours, they can work with regular, regular ed kids also.
A lot of the kids are getting serviced.
That's right.
Right, that's true.
Yep.
Except that the current job descriptive for the school adjustment counselor, some of the other additional duties that I'm looking for are not in that job description, so how does that impact me getting that stuff done? If it's not in the job description.
I don't know what's in the job, I didn't.
I, I, I have the children.
Can we do the, can we do?
No, no, it's not driven the day.
But, but there will be D T A members.
Correct, okay, I, then, if it, the end goal is two school adjustment counselors, that's fine. I, I just, I'm looking for other duties to be done by the person that's going to do stuff with students with disabilities.
I'm not comfortable with the social worker that's going to be visiting families, alright? I'm not, I'm not comfortable for that, the outside school hours.
And I didn't mean it was going to be outside.
Number one, houses are going to be, houses will be paid for, number one, and number two, it's not safe, so.
So it wouldn't be done during, it wouldn't be done after hours, Mr. D B O Zio, it would be done during the day and the person would be going with someone.
Are you going to send a social worker out alone?
They would not be going out alone.
Oh, so now we're having more people leave the school to go to services.
It was no different during COVID and during his school year where the mental health team would go out and visit families, two people would go out and visit them and check on families and check on students that are not going to be just.
Alright, right now, we have a motion.
Yeah, a motion for two adjustment counselors to be split according to what, uh, they got there, um, Mr. Kitchen, it just said.
One will be paid from two forty, one will be paid from regular appropriation. So it's a total of three adjustments, it'd be three.
Yeah, excellent, thank you very much. Mr. Silva will be very happy, both myself, thank you.
Go ahead, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Does the one, what would you need to come up?
Whatever.
We're going to have to post for that job.
Who's the second on that?
We're encouraging her to apply.
Father Mal, is, is she as a current employee, I know she's paid by the grant.
She is.
Okay.
She is, but she's been given the letter indicating that should we post for this position, we encourage you to, to apply. So, uh, my assumption would be if we post for this position tomorrow, we suppose it goes that way.
You've been happy with our work?
Yeah.
With Christine's work?
Yes.
The kids know her.
Bye bye. Okay, so you, you don't need the, um, subcommittee to meet.
No. I think that just tomorrow, I gotta get my head wrapped around all of this with, uh, Mr. Kitchen, make sure the I's are dotted and the T's crossed, and we're posting it the correct way.
Okay.
And the source of funding is the correct way too.
And if there are other responsibilities, other jobs or duties that you want, we can certainly manage a subcommittee and talk about those.
Right.
Right?
Yep. Okay, uh, moving on, three point one, all matters, G.
You need to skip that.
Skip that one.
I don't, I don't think that's gonna be discussed in the executive session.
Okay. Next is, uh, H, the school nurse staffing, uh, Mr. Betting?
Yes, uh, the request of a community member, is that, uh, put this on the agenda to discuss the school nurses' office staffing. Uh, I have given you some information as to what, uh, I found this ratio, but also present with me is one of our school nurses, uh, Mrs. Chelsea DeCosta, uh, who is here to answer questions, uh, and I guess it would start because, uh, it came from the committee asking questions about staffing and that, so I think I'll open it up with the committee members asking what questions do you have.
Excuse me, um, we all received the email from Rebecca Ward.
Yes.
And I read that, you know, and said, you know, and she's in all caps, and she was shocked, and then talked about the, what's going on in the nurse's office, and then I had the conversation with you.
Yes.
And I didn't even know of the, is it a recommendation or is it a law, the five hundred to one?
These are recommendations both from the National Association of School Nurses and the Association of School Nurses, which I included with your material there.
Yeah.
There you can see, one, it comes out of a committee that was put together, um, of, of the Legislative Committee, uh, in nineteen ninety-eight, goes back to that. They gave a ratio of how it should be. The National Association of School Nurses has a different ratio that they gave, um, and one says that it's one nurse to seven hundred and fifty students, uh, and the other one indicates, uh, one nurse to five hundred students, and then it gradually goes up according to how many students you have, and of course, what the needs are of the students that you're servicing. Uh, so I, I put them both here for you for your.
So having received that email per, I had asked them, so, I mean, we all received the email that came out today, the very detailed one, from Jen Roche. I know nothing about, I didn't know about nursing, I had nothing about it at all, like, it was like, um, there are two nurses in the nursing department.
The current staffing is two nurses and one medical assistant. The medical assistant was hired during COVID, or just prior to COVID, for COVID, uh, and has been a third person in there to deal with the onslaught that COVID gave to us. Prior to that, there was always staffed by two full-time school nurses, both RNs. Okay, um, and that's what the current staffing is right now.
Two full-time nurses and one MA?
Yes.
Okay.
That is the current staffing, but the MA was funded on a grant. That grant is almost similar to what we just talked about with one of the school adjustment counselors here. That grant is coming to an end June thirtieth. She was given the notice just as other people were paid out of the grant, that the funding is coming to an end, and that your job may not be, uh, continued due to funding, sources now terminated. Similar letter as this, the MA was given, was that should the position, uh, be advertised, we encourage you to.
Reapply.
But, but there is nothing in the works right now that is being recommended that any other position be advertised for that office. That we will go to two school nurses, June thirtieth.
Which would be short of the recommendation. Now, five hundred to one.
Not the National Association of School Nurses.
Which is one to seven hundred.
Which is one to seven fifty.
One, seven fifty.
I was, I know Jen, I know none of the nurses, in all due respect, that you do a great work. I have two hundred and seventy-five kids in my school, granted it's different, I have two K to eight grade, but I have two full-time nurses. I think they're overworked, they do a lot of paperwork, county reporting, everything. So I, you guys see, I think she.
This is three days.
So, the.
What, what is three days?
So right here, I have paperwork, so I was asked three random dates of logs of what we do. Um, so I have the short version, which just states the amount of logs that we've had for those three random days. And then I have the long version, which I can't really fully let you look at due to student privacy, and this is worth three days. The, these are notes that, um, go over what the students came in for, follow-up calls, uh, meetings that we had to attend with parents, like five or four meetings, I E Ps, um, and everything in between, and I'd be happy to discuss that.
So, in my field, we have levels one to four, how complicated, if you're dealing with hypertension, you're dealing with diabetes, you're dealing with depression.
Yep.
If you're dealing with five items, we'll call it a level five.
Okay.
Can we agree to that?
Okay.
So on your, on average, if you were to quantify those stacks, are they level ones all day, every day, or are they level fives all day, every day?
I would say a mix of in-between, uh, and I don't know.
So how many level fives do you see in those random three days?
So, can I just kind of, so on a typical day, right off the, right off the bat, I know guaranteed I'm gonna see twenty-five students no matter what. I have, well, we have fifteen diabetics and then ten daily medications. For example, today, I had one diabetic student come into my office four or five times, just one student, I'm not talking about others, but trying to manage their blood glu, glucose levels. Um, that same student has already gone to the emergency room for a diabetic emergency. Uh, our medical assistant actually went with her, she felt comfortable going with someone from the nursing office, and so that we wouldn't have a nurse go, um, due to, you know, when there's an emergency, a nurse goes, and medical, medical assistant usually goes with her. Then we have a nurse in the office in case we have a student who needs a medication or diabetic management, things like, things like that. So on a typical day, I don't really know, we have, we're a vocational school, we have a lot of injuries. We have a higher rate of injuries just due to the equipment that the students are using on the day-to-day. So we could have a day where we see twenty students and they're easygoing, and we could have a day that we see five students, but it's complicated cases. So it's hard to quantify, you know, but I, I really do think we see all levels.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So now with the system, we have another nurse in there and a doctor.
So.
That's not, the doctor's not there all the time, but the nurse is.
Yep.
Um, but we have a injury that comes in.
Yes.
Isn't that the load shift over to them, because that's what they're there for?
So I'm very glad you asked that question, and I actually have, um, a letter from Health First that kind of details the fact that they do not help us with our students.
Okay, so why do they help?
So it's no, so they're there as an added service to the students and families. So we, when a student comes into the office, we ultimately make the decision if they are not, if they are or not getting referred to Health First. They're not treating students unless we refer them and to, unless a parent or guardian consents. So it's no different than if we were to get a student and have to refer them out to an urgent care or their PCP, and they're off-site. So it's technically just like referring a student out.
You're triaging them in a sense.
Yes, essentially, so Health First doesn't step in until a referral and a consent is made. Then at that point, they take over the care, but they don't provide care unless it reaches that next step.
So there are extra people in your office, or your.
They're not the first line of defense. Absolutely not, no, no.
What, what can we do to maybe allocate that they do become a first line of defense to mitigate the extensive responsibilities you've been exposed to?
Well, they, I mean, they're, they're their own separate entity, like, they're not diamond employees, they're Health First employees. They don't have access to the students' charts like we do. Um, they have access to, like, where their student is in the building to call them down for their appointments if need be, or like if they're already in our office and they can be seen right away, then they get discharged essentially from us, and then Health First takes over. But again, that's only after consent is received and the referral is made. They're not stepping in halfway through an assessment and taking over care. It's just not the way it works. They don't have access to all the students in the building, they just have access to certain information once they're, they're referred out to Health First. And I, I don't know if you guys would like to take a look at the letter, but this is.
No, I, I understand what you're saying.
Explain it.
So, so, uh, Chelsea, let me just reiterate, because I'm very well aware of how a whole system works.
Okay.
Um, with healthcare, um, and nursing as well, and I understand you guys do a lot.
Okay.
Nursing has always been an underrated.
Undeserved.
Undeserved, no matter where you go.
High stress.
Whether at the hospital, in, in a doctor's office, or in a school system.
Right.
Um, as far as, you know, I look at some of the numbers that have been presented to us, and I know you can't look at numbers, you have to look at population, you have to look at external situations.
Right.
Um, acuity of patients, in general, we have a pretty healthy population of students in this school, in general. Um, diabetics, you're always gonna have diabetics, you're gonna have asthma, you have a, a large group of asthmatics.
Yes.
Of, of that group of asthmatics, probably four percent of them have actually had a, a real asthma attack in the last five years. Most of them get diagnosed and they have inhaler, um, but in the high school setting, what's good, on your side, in the high school setting, is a lot of these kids are self-administration medications. They come to you and you actually, you hand them their medication, but as far as their insulin, they're self-administered, the vast majority of them anyway. Most of them, you're not checking blood glucose, glucose, because they have CGMs, they have, uh, continuous glucose monitors, the vast majority of them anyway, I would assume, correct?
So, yes and no, so in terms of inhalers, I can't tell you the amount of students that are coming down to me as they're saying, I can't breathe, and I'm asking them, where's your inhaler, I don't have it, it's at home. I've had to call multiple parents to bring in a student's inhaler, say either you can come pick them up, or we're gonna have to call EMS if you're not here within a certain amount of time. Um, same thing with diabetics, sensors fail, we actually do do a lot of finger sticks, especially with highs and lows for, just for accuracy, because a lot of times their CGM is just not a hundred percent what their actual blood glucose level is. So we do a lot of.
I'm not saying you don't.
More hands-on work than people realize.
Plus all the paperwork, yeah.
Plus all the paperwork.
Yeah.
Um, we've had seventy-five field trips and counting, um, and our medical assistant does the initial clearance. Um, and with that, she goes into every individual chart, um, again, I can't show you, but this, this, these are all lists of students. As you can see, it's color-coded to see who's cleared, who's not, and then those that are not cleared, nursing needs to then follow up and chase medical orders, medications, inhalers, and then paperwork, following up with all that, calling home.
So I'll get back to my initial question. How is your work going to be affected by this position not being filled?
So we're just gonna have to absorb, so basically, the way I can put it is while we're taking care of, like, the bigger cases that are outside of the medical assistant's scope of practice, she's handling and putting out a lot of the little fires. And she's saving time, she's taking phone calls, and being in the healthcare field, she can take those messages, she might even be able to handle some of those phone calls, um, and we just have to absorb all that, and to be honest, I don't even think there's enough time in the day. And when I tell you that most days during the week, we do have to stay later on just for documentation purposes, it's true.
So you're advocating for us to maintain an MA.
Yeah, I'm not advocate, at, like, at this point in time today, I'm not asking for extra, I'm just asking to keep what we have.
Okay.
And I mean, I'll ask this question when Mr. Kitchen comes back. Um, the funding that is currently covered under, is there any other, this is funding or grant that could help us with that?
Uh, I'm, I don't know that, um, he may, because grants is not my specialty.
Um.
I do know that the current person working in there right now, uh, Kim, who's there, she is on the grant, that was able to be, uh, that Jen did secure without, without funding for that.
Is there any, the grant that's running out, covering the medical assistant, are there any other means, or any other ways of covering that position?
Thank you so much.
I think for, uh, martini or something.
Anything for this part.
There, there was a, um, placeholder in the regular appropriation for, for next year.
Oh, okay.
But also, there is a grant that the nurse's office applies to, uh, one of the.
That's not, no?
Public safety.
Yeah.
Public safety.
That's what she's in.
That's an allocation, that has the supplement.
Could our students in the MA program help mitigate some of the remedial, the, the, the follow-up, the phone calls without the violation?
I think that's not a good idea, only because you think about high school drama, and then all of a sudden, everyone's gonna know what's happening in the nurse's office.
I have, I have no issue with that for us, I mean, my only qualm is, is every time we get a grant job in this school.
Yep.
It becomes a full-time job, so why do we apply for grants? Because all we're gonna do is absorb that salary, benefits, everything else, when it's all over. So, I'm just, I'm just, I, I asked this question of Mr. Bentley, put him up on the wall, and said, how many of those are gonna be full-time when they're done? You know, and as we saw tonight, two jobs that were on grants are gonna now be jobs.
But they're also jobs.
Well, it's, it's.
Times have changed.
But if we didn't have the grant, there would be two nurses in there that fit that.
This was put into place during COVID, just to be sure.
This was put into place for COVID, when the nursing staff had a lot more workload on them, there was a lot more going on. Since that time, COVID has come and gone, things are changed, uh, we operated with two nurses in that nurse's, in that nurse's office for years prior to COVID. And now we have, now we're at a point where they're stating these next. Well, we also see the numbers. I don't, I don't, I personally don't see it, but, don't see it. That involves a lot of mental health stuff, girl.
Exactly.
And there are mental health students who do end up in the nursing staff, I mean.
Absolutely.
Well, not only that, the work, oh, in the high school, there are more counselors than they are nurses half the time. You see more students in there talking to you about their daily problems sometimes than you do about their actual health issues. I know with the high school age, they tend to wanna talk to the nurse sometimes more than, than their counselor.
Yes and no.
Yeah?
Yes and no, I definitely think they go hand in hand, we had a student today who came in right off the bus with a panic attack, and we were the first stop, and it's, you know, it's heartbreaking stuff sometimes.
Well, sometimes you're biggest help. But there is a placeholder for that money, I like to think, the position that is currently there.
I'll second it.
Well, I think it's up to the budget, if we.
Well, it is, there's grants out there.
He's also had a placeholder in there.
The placeholder in regular appropriation is also a grant that the, the district receives from the, from the public safety, I believe, that allows for a certain amount of hours to be worked, um, for support staff.
Okay.
If we use the grant, even better.
Yeah.
They're just making sure they have the support they need to keep doing what they're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Kim, um, I hear, I, I did, I'm not being a stickler, but I did hear a motion and a second.
Yeah, who made the motion? My second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Aye.
Only, not because of the position, because I'm tired of the grants becoming full-time jobs.
But, so.
I'm sorry.
I wanna be clear.
For this to be, you know, this to be.
The motion is to post for a.
Medical assistant.
A medical assistant.
Or to let the person who currently has it continue, or I don't know whether that works.
Well, I do.
Yeah.
Look, her, her position is coming to an end, so she, we, we, oh, she can apply for it.
All right, you know my brother. I made up a beer, I was watching my classes.
Which is like mine.
No one I could see. Okay, aye, paraprofessional, um, security guard.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, uh, is that although there's no official pay step for paraprofessionals or for security officers, uh, I do see it that when we're hiring a new paraprofessional or a new security officer, should that happen, and there's gonna be a new paraprofessional coming in, we are, we are fixed on, like, what can they guess?
So, could, paraprofessionals is an executive session.
Do Kim discuss this?
Can we discuss it there?
Is it okay to continue, am I, am I good then, to go, to go, to, to continue this, what I was just talking about, or do you wanna wait till?
Waiting till executive session, because it's in there anyway, the paraprofessionals, and I, actually, security guards are in there too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, substitute teacher nurse daily rate?
Yes, so, uh, in looking at what we've spent this past year, and looking at where we wanna go, uh, I did meet with, uh, Mr. Kitchen, uh, with myself, uh, and we have redesigned the substitute daily, uh, rate. Currently, and you have a paper, the white one, that you have as what the proposals will be for a new pay rate, and the school committee is gonna set the rate, but on the backside, there's a comparison of, of what we were paying and what other districts are paying, so, 'cause I'm a long right, I'm gonna.
So you want to go down?
Please?
You want to go down?
Yes, is that we, we feel confident that we can move down to a daily, uh, rate of a hundred twenty-five dollars per day, and we still have a regular pool of substitute teachers, all right, and we're paying one hundred and fifty, um, and we are paying one fifty.
You did go up.
We, twice.
Right, and we've voted to increase it twice in the past couple of years, because we weren't getting enough.
And during COVID is where we had the problem, that's why we opted, because we didn't.
It was actually prior, even prior, prior to COVID, we opted, then during COVID.
Then COVID, we opted to one hundred and fifty.
I'll just put it in perspective. It is, it is. It'd be better for me, because my small capital will be paying more for subs, just to put that in context. Which, I mean, I think you have a tough time getting someone to come here, one hundred twenty-five, that's why we raised it twice.
Correct.
It's fine.
Correct, give your feedback.
So it's more inclined to cut work for me than today, but.
Obviously, the Catholic Church has more than them, it does.
I mean, I was, I was, I was approached by several substitutes, Chairman, um, that are here all the time, and they asked that the rate not be changed. I mean, the subs that we've had in this school for many, many years.
Well, this, no offense taken, anyway, this is just a presentation of the discussion we had, I mean, this committee feels that a hundred and fifty dollars is appropriate. Please understand, that's, that's, I can go with that, you have the right to set the rate, okay, that's why we're bringing this to.
I'm looking at the former school system, and they're paying a hundred and fifty.
They are.
And the charter is over two hundred, at two twenty-five, I didn't see the.
Really?
Charter, yeah, yeah, oh, minus, it's over two hundred.
Two twenty-five?
Two twenty-five?
I'm just afraid if we lower.
What's the motivation? What, what is the motive? Is it economics or?
I'll make a motion now too. That's lower.
I got a motion to keep it.
Keep it the same.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
So the daily rate will be one hundred fifty dollars per day.
They'll just stay the same?
Sure.
It's the.
We're keeping it the same. So, but there is a change in the long term. So we have found that, uh, whether it's the population we have in the building or just the needs that pop up, we have long-term assignments and this is where a teacher goes out for family illness, teacher goes out maternity leave. We need somebody in there who's gonna not be there just for a day, but actually is gonna take on the entire duties of that teacher for a period of time. Could be three months, it could be longer. We currently have a, uh, situation where, uh, one of our female teachers is out on maternity leave. She went out, uh, last month, right? She's out for the rest of the year. So this is a, that's not a daily sub-rate. Those instructors, what we have been doing is automatically giving them two hundred and fifteen dollars per day. Like what we're proposing is that, these are long-term, they don't have a degree. They would get the daily rate of pay, so I guess that one twenty-five would be one fifty, but they do for twenty days on that assignment. Then on the twenty-first day, it goes to two hundred dollars per day. But they would have to do twenty consecutive days on the same assignment. History teacher is going out on some kind of a leave of absence. Okay, we have right now two science teachers out on a leave of absence. And we have two substitutes in there who are doing the best they can. Uh, but they are teaching, administering exams, correcting papers, doing grading. And that's the kind of assignment that we're looking for, that these people would go at first, a hundred fifty dollars a day, but then on day twenty-one, they would go to two hundred dollars. Currently, they just started off at two hundred and fifteen dollars per day off the bat. So this would be a step.
So it says non-degree, right?
That's a non-degree.
What, what about, um, a shop teacher?
For shop teachers, most in vocational practice do not have, is that they're not re, some shops are required to have a degree, like your medicals, they all are. But if you're looking at, um, perhaps programming web, but if you're looking at a metal fab teacher, they, they're not required to have a degree, auto mechanics, not a degree, automotive manufacturing, not a degree.
Would they fall under?
They would be a non-degree person if it's a long-term sub.
Right.
So we need somebody for metal fab for a period of three months. An operation.
How much is that?
The degree goes to the sub, not, not the position. So if I have a bachelor's and I am certified, after the next step would be, I would get my bachelor's. So I go, after twenty days, I go up to first step pay of a teacher. If I don't, I have an associate's degree or I have a, a high school diploma, I stay at two hundred.
Where I was going with this, and that's why I was asking about the shop. Some shops act, actually are licensed. They'd be electricity.
Electricity is a good example.
So if somebody goes out long-term, isn't the best candidate to get in there would be somebody who's a licensed electrician?
Yes.
So how would we be paying?
Unfortunately, since the HVAC, we've had somebody in that position for almost two years.
Very difficult to get, Mr. Jenny, it's very difficult. A person who's a licensed, we have the situation with HVAC, good example. Uh, we have had that open for two years because we cannot get a licensed instructor to come in. And we're advertising for one and we can't get a licensed instructor to sub. So we have had a substitute teacher in there for almost two years. Oh, this person's been out. Okay, and so what we've done with that person is because he's assuming the duties of a teacher, the logistics of a teacher, but he's not an HVAC person, he is getting a higher rate of pay of two hundred fifteen dollars a day.
Which is equivalent to step one.
Yes.
He doesn't have a degree.
He does not. No, no, and I think the category that would be, he's not licensed as an HVAC person. He is just a, a very good worker who comes in and is young, relates to the kids, and does a very good job, but he's not licensed.
So non-degree would be two hundred and if they have a degree, it would be two fifteen?
It would be first step.
It would be first step.
Which is two fifteen, you said?
Two fifteen.
Yeah, whatever first step.
Next year if it changes, it could be up to two sixty.
Yeah, whatever the first step of a teacher's contract is. We divide that by one eighty-three and that's the rate pay.
Few shops where they're licensed, maybe plumbing, electrical?
Plumbing, electrical, and HVAC.
All the tech.
The rest of the.
Certification.
All the shops with certifications.
HVAC, plumbing, electrical.
Dental.
Dental has a license, yep. Uh, medical, they need a degree, like medical assisting and in health assistant.
I'm, I'm just worried about getting something, those talented subjects where they're, they're teaching the kids.
With having a hundred fifty dollars a day, we should be fine.
Yeah?
But we, we'll be okay. What we're finding is that we've had a number of instructors go out long-term since I've been here. Okay, one was out long-term when I arrived. He's still out long-term. Okay, due to a medical situation. Uh, we're going to be advertising for another gentleman who is, uh, going to go out because of health reasons. Uh, we will need to fill this blank for the remainder of the year.
On, on, on something like that. Because if you're risking him being here for three years and then getting a full-time permanent.
He hasn't, he hasn't been able to get a license in the trade, although he's been encouraged. And maybe if you like this trade, we did have one person, we had a person in programming and web who came in as a substitute. She liked it so much, she went, she got herself licensed.
Oh, great.
Okay. Uh, she just, uh, she, she really enjoyed it so much, she then said, okay, let me put her for an emergency license, which she did. She then took the cost where she got herself all the way fully licensed. That, I mean, she backed out of saying like, I'll go in for a while, and then she fell in love with the program. That happens. But we, we, if we go to the long-term sub assignment with non-degree and bachelor's degree, um, it would, on one non-degree, it would go to a two hundred dollar fee, flat fee, as opposed to two hundred fifteen. On the degree person, it would be a hundred fifty dollars, long-term assignment. That person would go to the first step of the teacher's pay scale.
So what's the difference between the two hundred and the first step?
A degree.
Uh, it is the.
Or a license. Currently, it's very small, but if the new, depending on how the negotiations come out, it could change. So it would.
Two hundred is a flat fee, we're probably figuring that first step is gonna be, oh, let's suppose it's sixty-five thousand dollars as first step. Let's just suppose, divide that by one eighty-three, that's what that person would get.
Okay.
Given credit. On the twenty-first day, on the twenty-first day. Yeah, both of these occur on the twenty-first day, correct? It's either gonna be two hundred dollars on day twenty-one going forward or first step of the paid, paid scale going forward. You're right.
And, and, and it would be over two hundred. That's probably where I'm getting.
It would be.
Six hundred.
It would be, but we, for the first twenty days, it would be a hundred fifty dollars. And then it jumps on day twenty-one. Right now, we start them at a jump level.
All right, and then the next one? Is the nurse?
Yep, the substitute school nurse, we take a look, uh, for the substitute school nurse, uh, we automatically start her at a daily rate of first step of the nurse's scale, which is two hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-seven cents per day. It would commit two seventy-four point thirty-seven.
That's right now?
That is right now. So if the nurse is out and we need a substitute nurse for the day, that substitute nurse is gonna get two hundred seventy-four dollars plus for every day that he or she is subbing in there.
Do you wanna bring it to two hundred?
We're saying that should be the flat, two hundred dollars a day.
How about on the twenty-first day, will she get?
Does not change unless it's a long-term assignment.
Oh, let's make the assumption it is a long-term.
Then it would go back to following this format here that I'm.
Which would be the two seventy-four?
Yes. Well, it'd be whatever first step is of this, on day twenty-one.
What's the motivation to lower them?
Economics. It'll be beyond that, it'll be, we have, we have a number of substitute teachers who thoroughly enjoy subbing here. One of them is a representative of the city of Fall River, who would rather sub here than the Fall River school. Can say, no names mentioned. Uh, he is very happy to come. He says the kids are great, he enjoys what he does, and he likes being here.
All right, so. I had a question.
No, I'm just looking at two hundred dollars a day. Are we gonna get nurses in for two hundred dollars a day? It's like twenty-eight dollars an hour. You know, a nurse, I mean, they don't, they make decent amount of money. Are we gonna, do we have a pool of nurses, sub nurses that you think will come in at two hundred dollars a day?
We have one that has been with us for a while.
And she's gonna take a pay cut.
On day twenty-one, she'd go up, but yes, she would take a pay cut. Okay, and again.
On the day one, she'd be at one fifty.
But on, but on day one, she's still not making one hundred.
Okay, all right.
Right, the least it could be is two hundred.
That's cool. Even on day twenty-one, she'd still be making less than she's making now, or here.
If she came in on a day-to-day basis, she would be at two hundred. If she came in as a long-term assignment, she would be two hundred until day number twenty-one.
Then day twenty-one, she'd still be making less than she's making right now.
Well, she'd go to first step.
Which would be what?
Right now, it's two hundred seventy-four.
Two seventy, I don't know.
Can you just base it on the old contract?
The teacher's first step is the same as the teacher's, the teacher's first step.
The old contract.
Nurses and teachers.
But she has a different schedule, but the, the number is relatively close.
Yeah, it was barely, it was close to parry. I know we had worked on that a lot, a few years ago. It was very close. You know, Mr. San Pietro comes in having experience in culinary and having, okay, ended up with plumbing or automotive. But a nurse, it's like you have, you can't just bring, Mr. San Pietro can't be a sub in the nurse's office.
All right, our current school nurse.
He would try.
Our current, I don't have a calculator with me.
Tell me.
Moment. It's fifty thousand, two hundred, ten dollars is step one of the nurse.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, five zero, two one.
Divided by one eighty-three?
One eighty-three.
Two seventy-four point three seven.
So that's first step. So the school nurse gets right from the get-go, gets the first step equivalent.
Unless they only do select.
Right now, they get two seventy-four.
But if they just come in for a field trip, because the nurse goes.
So that's only if they, they get to this two seventy-four if they were a long-term sub and got to day twenty-one.
Consecutive.
Under what, which is what I'm proposing.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But, but other than that, if, if the nurse is out here or there and that sub nurse comes in, they're gonna get two hundred bucks a day.
Yes.
Which is now, right now, she's getting two seventy-four.
Correct. And it's, it's, well, you get the economics of the situation, but again, how often do we have sub nursing?
Every time we have field trip.
Sounds like it.
You should bring this sub as a circle on the field trip. She has actually.
Has she?
Joking.
Tripped to California last year.
Okay. Tripped to California. So would she get paid for every day she was out there?
Yep.
Wow.
So that, again, it's a proposal.
I guess the only concern we have is making sure you can find a qualified person to get in there, right?
I could try this and I can do this and you can say, just go ahead, try that, Mr. Dudley, and then I can come back and say.
It's not working and we can't calculate.
Say that again, come back and just say, uh, yep, uh, or we can just say, leave it alone as is, why mess with it? And leave it as is.
I would, I just think lowering. I, I, what's the financial impact? I mean, what, what do you see? Is, do we, do we have money bleeding into the nurse, into the nurse?
The nurse's account isn't as substantial as the day-to-day subs. Last year, we spent over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in subs.
Total subs?
Sub line for teachers. They don't.
Not nurses.
No, so that's a significant number.
They go seventy-five field trips, that's a great ballpark.
Well, the difficulty with field trips, Phil, that really is.
It's only if somebody's going.
We have, we have teachers that go on field trips and take other teachers as chaperones, rather than asking parents to do chaperoning. Or have other people chaperone with them. So by pulling out more teachers out of the building to go on field trips, it's a flaw.
And we don't have to have a nurse on every field trip, correct?
Uh.
I was wondering, that was the biggest, it depends.
It depends. It depends. If they're going to, like Skills USA, we're going to Atlanta, Georgia, we're gonna have forty. We're gonna have almost fifty students and, and chaperones going there. That's gonna be a nurse. And last year, there was a medical emergency, not with us, but our school nurse did chime in. It was a, so we're now gonna grade a new benefit and they helped. So it's just a precaution, you know? Uh, we just had, uh, we had a trip to, right now, in Chicago for the, uh, Business Professionals of America. They are there right now because the school nurse with them. Because we have about five students with, you read some of the medical stuff, they're coming out tonight, they're there with them right now. But we're not sending a nurse to the Newport Auto Museum.
No.
On a field trip. We're, so we're not sending them, we're sending them on a long distance, overnight trips.
We will send them on the overnight.
That's a good point, and we will send them with class trips. Class trips. So the big trips, senior trip, junior trip. We're gonna have a junior. Which makes sense, that makes sense. That makes sense. And we will, that's all three hundred plus students are going out.
I have a question. How much money are we saving by lowering a nurse's rate?
It's insignificant. I mean, you can leave it the same if you want to. I, I mean, I, I don't know what the other.
He, he's more concerned about the one twenty-five to one fifty.
I think.
Yeah, because of the number of extra people you have come in every day, but we do use them, so.
Because how many subs, Andrew, do we use a day?
Berish, Berish, for example, today we had seventeen, on Monday we had.
Andrew, we, we do some, when we have a, a trip, don't you have the authority to send a sub and not use our teachers? Cause our teachers, now the rest of the students that are still here are losing out because we're sending teachers with other teachers to go to these trips.
Yeah, we send subs.
So, I mean, the kids lose that time.
Yeah, we send subs.
Yeah, so would it be more advantageous to start doing that rather than having multiple teachers going on these trips?
It, it, it's a balance, right? So auto collision is going to the Newport Museum, the auto collision teachers are going. Right, if an English department.
Yeah, but they're all shops going.
The English, uh, the grades that are going. So if the juniors are going, the seniors, the junior and senior teacher are going, right? Uh, English is the same way. English is going to Great Gatsby, they'll pull the English teachers to go.
I mean, how many English students, kids could be left here? They're gonna have English that day, they're not gonna have an English teacher. How many?
Yeah, it really depends on who goes to the trip.
That's what I mean. If, if the senior class is going, you have two senior teachers, then that's one thing. But if we're pulling a freshman English teacher and the freshman kids are gonna lose out for the day, that's, you know, we're cutting these kids, we have a hundred and eighty-three days to educate these kids and, uh, we're taking them, you know, graphic arts, two teachers with the Californian. So two grade levels in graphic arts, lost out. Lost out because they were there and now their students are still here and nobody's teaching them. So a sub is, but the sub don't know. So I'm just saying, we really start, should stop looking at, at who's gonna chaperone and why. You know what I mean? And what we can do to use more subs or parents, like they used to for many years, parents.
We've started those internal discussions about having parents, you know, volunteer chaperones.
Did we outright say no parents to go on these day-to-day trips or is there some binding element?
If I can answer it this way, we're given pause this year because of the number of teachers that were pulled to go on field trips. That was a discussion that just.
So the more reason to include.
Not, not that long ago, we said, we gotta start developing a pool of parents that are willing to go on field trips and leave the teachers here. And that, again, we go through the steps, they'd have to be carried, um, they would have to be paid, of course, but they'd have to be carried, make sure they're safe to be around our teachers. We feel that there would be a number of parents that'd be saying, I'll go. Because their sons or daughters may not want their mom or dad there, but that's not our worry. Our worry is do we have enough people, potential, unresilient to cover everybody on a field trip?
Well, that sounds like you're getting that covered, then.
I think getting back to that, I think that what we're talking about is the decreasing or increasing the subs. I think I'm, I'm cool with the, the teaching, the teacher decreasing. I think the nurse is a specialty, it needs to, I think the turn, nursing pay needs to stay the same. Cause we can't just get anybody in there. You have to get a nurse. It's as simple as that. So, I mean, I'm, however you wanna put that forth, that's how I feel.
As, as a regular teacher, if you leave, have a lesson plan, if you leave a lesson plan, supposedly, a substitute is able to implement that lesson plan, supposedly, so.
Majority of our subs are just standing there because they're not long-term subs, they don't, they don't teach.
All right, why don't, why don't we take it line by line? We already approved the daily assignment?
I don't know what you just said.
How many of our, how many of our subs that come in here during the day? Open it, open up a book and tell the kids, okay, this is the lesson plan, this is what we're gonna do. Or do they just babysit the class?
I think we have emergency lesson plans and our subs do a great job of implementing those emergency lesson plans.
And if they're in a shop.
Shop is different, right? Like, it was bad.
But if they're in, and, but sometimes we'll minus a, down a shop teacher and we have to put a non-vocational person in that shop so much for the safety of the kids.
So the baby's.
It is, it, it's, I like to call it the safety of the kids, so I'll just supervising them.
Yeah, it's a supervisor.
Giving them permission to go to the bathroom and, and monitoring them. But no, they're not gonna teach them. If they're in culinary arts, they're not gonna show them how to.
Right, okay.
All right, but on the academic side, uh, we stress what we'd like them to do. What do they do? Mr. DiVazio, I'd like to say that if they're following the lesson plan, we have some that do. Yeah, but there's, that, that's the best way to say it, right? It's difficult to monitor.
All right, we, we got a bigger agenda to go through here, so. All right, we, we got a bigger agenda to go through here, so, all right, let's take them line by line. Daily assignment, are we all in agreement, we're going through one fifty, I had heard.
Stay the same.
Staying what we are right now, right? The long-term, uh, assignment, non-degree?
That just goes to one fifty, whatever, to two hundred six.
Okay, and then the long-term assignment with the bachelor's degree?
That just stays as it is.
Stays as, and then the substitute school nurse?
I'm fine with it at two hundred, but.
I keep, say we keep it the same.
Same. All right, let's take a, a vote on it, uh, need a motion.
Mister Chair.
Yeah?
Sorry, clarification on the long-term assignment bachelor's degree.
Yep.
It's one fifty.
The first twenty days.
Okay.
Right, everything else stays the same as, on, as written here, as written here.
Time, time, I'm sorry, what is it currently right now?
The long-term sub?
Yeah.
One fifty.
Okay, so we're not lowering it?
No.
Keeping the same.
Long-term's two fifty.
Two fifteen.
Long-term sub assignment, right now, is two hundred and fifteen dollars right off the bat. We are setting up the parameter of one fifty for twenty days, where non-degree goes to two hundred. The other one is one fifty a day for twenty days, then it goes to first step, the teacher pay scale.
So we are lowering it?
For the first twenty days, for sure.
For the first twenty days, yes.
Consecutive days.
So whether you have a non-degree or a bachelor's degree, then you.
I'm not voting that out, I don't agree with that. I'm voting to lower any of them.
So, um, I, I make a motion, a motion that the long-term sub be moved to a hundred and fifty dollars a day for the first twenty days, and this is for the bachelor's degree, and on day twenty-one, the, the individual will be go to step one of the diamond teachers' contract.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second on that one? Having none doesn't pass, so do I have another motion?
Do you take no action, just take the same?
Yeah, no action.
No, no action would result in staying at two hundred and fifteen dollars per day.
Okay.
Okay.
In both categories.
And then the substitute nurse?
Make a motion, keep it the same.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I just wanna be.
So I think it's the same.
Seven, six, seven, eight.
Just twenty minutes on the rear.
I just wanna be clear on both.
Okay.
On the long-term assignments, it's gonna stay at two hundred and fifteen dollars per day, period.
Keeping it, it doesn't matter bachelor or associate.
That's what I'm asking for clarification for, that right now, they get two hundred and fifteen dollars a day.
I think it's gonna stay the same.
No, with the long-term assignment, non-degree, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, there's no differentiation.
We don't differentiate right now.
So if they do have a degree, they're still at two fifteen?
Two hundred and fifteen dollars, that's why I'm asking the question, Dr. Raj. I just wanna make sure that.
I would, if I can, I think make a motion then to change that, so that those with degrees are getting more than those without.
Yeah, it has to be revamped.
Yeah, okay.
On the twenty-first day, start everybody at two fifteen, and then on the twenty-first day, those that are.
Well, how many, so what is the difference in a daily assignment?
Was that? We can take this up to August.
It's about next school season anyway, so.
I'm making a motion to table this, Mr. Trebey.
You're gonna motion to table it?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
I'll come back later on with something.
I think maybe people are getting tired, I don't know.
Well, no, it makes sense though, you're, it makes sense, I mean, degree versus non-degree should, there should be a differentiation between the two.
Yes.
All right, three point one other matters, Kay, student handbook.
I'll defer to Mr. Rabello, I do wanna let the committee members know that you have an email, the full student handbook that's been sent to your email, so we do not have a copy of all two hundred-plus pages tonight.
So, the big changes this year were really grammatical, but you do see the four changes that happened with the new regulations coming out. Um, our, our partnership and our work with DESI for our TFM, our tier-focused monitoring, are really the first three, discipline of students with IABs, discipline of students with five oh fours, and emergency removal, those are the language cleanup in the following pages. The last one is honor roll parameters. You see the present language, it's cumbersome, doesn't make sense, and we were really running into a lot of issues with our Aspen system, running this current protocol to determine honor roll at the end of each semester. You look at the proposed, it really cleans it up. So at the end of a semester, did that student maintain grades above ninety, ninety and above, high honors? Did that student maintain, uh, an eighty or above? That student would be qualified for honors. So this really cleans up the language, there's no discrepancy, if I'm a parent or if I'm a student, hey, I got all, all As and one B, uh, then I know I'm an honor student, and we, we publicize that name, it's a lot easier to track, um, without making a huge difference into what high honors and honors fees are. That, that was the major change to it, everything else was grammatical in our student handbook. Mr. Zajak and the student handbook committee did a great job again this year, which had teachers, students, and parents on it.
Is that it, Yosa? Is it? Any questions?
Uh, just a question, under the, like, student five oh fours, do you take this from the state?
This is language directly from the state. And yeah, it came out of TFM.
Thank you.
The recommendation is to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Need a second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to, uh, spring advisory report.
Spring advisory report, they are in your packet, that you have in there, that you're reading. If you have any questions, you can always call me, or actually call Mrs. Torres, as it's for vocational programs, uh, but you can give her a call, or we can take it up at a future meeting.
Again, nice job. They did, they did a good job there.
Yeah.
It's in my library.
Next is M, bid awards, Mr. Kitchen?
Uh, we have two bid awards to consider, both of metal fabrication, first is for a Lincoln welding, Lincoln welding, a fuel extraction system, basically, uh, it's a system for all the arc welding items. Right now, we currently exhaust outside, in the new building, we'll need a extraction system. The low, the apparent low bidder is total welding out of Freetown, the price is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight fifteen point one, uh, point eight eight. I put here, contingent upon SO three funding, which is, uh, funding that we have from the beds. I did speak to the Department of Beds, they find it to be inappropriate expenditure, it starts with mandigram, so it should be fine, but it wouldn't be set in place until May of twenty-five.
Okay. Okay, the recommendation is to approve.
Go to me.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
The second item is a flow, uh, Ecojet fabrication center, it's a water cut, uh, that's replacing the, uh, number two water, flow number two, and currently inside the metal fab. Uh, this item has a six-month delay on manufacturing, so it'll come in by next spring, and they'll remove the old one also. So, uh, the total cost of that item is two hundred and forty-three thousand, six eighty, and that is to be paid out of the Skills Capital Grant that Metal Fabrication has.
Recommendation is to approve, they, need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? And this is the amended?
Yeah, the backup is just to show that they're gonna, uh, remove the existing item and offset it by twenty-five thousand.
All right, next, N, two thousand twenty-three financial report, so you got the audits?
Yeah, some motions have received and placed on file for your edification, there are no substantial findings, uh, the management letter is an easy read, it's only a couple pages in one packet, and also the student activity funds, the one of the limitations was to, uh, reassess the receipts that we give, the cash that the cash for us, we do give receipts for everyone, uh, when we're taking them, and usually it's one of the business manager clerks, it's Colette usually at the main office, and she takes receipts and gives the cash and stuff, and then brings it down in the system, the safe, they ask for a transfer sheet, but, which is usually only done when the advisor takes the money, collects it all, takes down the denomination, and then transfers it in, so, uh, we did make that point out for them, so.
Okay, good.
So the motion received and placed on file.
Uh, oh, monthly financial report?
Uh, there isn't, uh, not a, a lot, we're coming to the ends, we did today do a, uh, cost projection on our salaries for the incumbent payroll, I haven't had a good, a good opportunity to go over it, later into this evening, there are some transfers for some negatives in, uh, some of our accounts, mostly departments for equipment, but we've been fortunate again with the grant, so offset a lot of our equipment needs.
Need a second?
All right, yeah. P, expenditures?
Expenditures of above ten thousand dollars, uh, we have our MSBA, MSBA expenditures, uh, then we have Wally Communication out of SO three, which is a hundred thousand six, uh, one hundred, one hundred thousand and six hundred dollars. That is for student Chromebooks for next year, for four hundred Chromebooks, we will purchase them now, they'll be in in probably sixty days. The seventeen thousand that goes along with that is the insurance for the Chromebooks. Burns Power Tools is two saws for the freshman area, the soft stop saws, table saws, uh, graphics is a printer, which is also gonna be offset by twenty-five thousand dollars from the.
Bengal Foundation.
Is this Bengal, or is it the Greater Fall River?
Uh, no, from the, I'm sorry, from the Greater Fall River, the Ryan Airport Road there, yes. We may have mentioned that at the last meeting.
I don't know. It's. It's offset twenty-five thousand dollars for donation.
And we have.
We apologize for that.
And, uh, of course, we send these beautiful thank yous.
We've accepted the donation earlier this year, so we just had to offset it. Tramal Equipment is actually, uh, benches for electronics, he's looking at, uh, trying to redo some of the furnishings in the senior area, to see if those benches will fit, to move down, uh, he did, uh, we're in the process of finalizing another Skills Capital Grant for that shop. We have been awarded, it just hasn't been sent, the contract has been sent, and I believe it's two hundred and fifty thousand.
That was recent, yes.
The next item, out of extraordinary expenses, is, I wanted to suggest purchasing a RAV four hybrid car to replace the nineteen, uh, excuse me, the twenty-fifteen Ford Escape that we have. We currently use the Ford Escape as a, it's a student vehicle in a way, it's, it's, it's listed as a seven D vehicle, cause it has the pupil plates on it, this vehicle won't, it'll have just commercial plates on it, so if the co-op coordinator needs it, or if the staff needs it for professional development, they can take it without it, otherwise, you're not supposed, you're not supposed to be driving seven D vehicles on the road for, unless you're driving students from portal to portal, which is home. Would the price ever getting, I really think, in the tariffs that are gonna go in the police, I think we're gonna have an issue with some of the, uh, vehicles coming back out if it does pass.
What, what, what's that again?
I think we're gonna have an issue with, with some of the shipping, again, uh, on the news the other day, they said, I think they're gonna go from a twenty-five percent on tariffs for imports to a hundred percent, so, unlike microchips and certain items, so I think it's gonna have a difficult issue.
So it's better to buy it now?
I think I'd rather buy it now. Plus it's a hybrid vehicle, I think we need to do something in the future, we can move the vehicle like that now, down to, down to AutoTech, and they'll, they'll manage it.
Plus it's hybrid, it'd be good for the AutoTech, take a look at it.
The eighteen thousand eight thirty-seven twenty is for metal fab for, uh, for multi-mig welders, that will become an out-of-Skills Capital Grant, we just approved the, uh, two twenty-nine and a two forty-three, I apologize, the two twenty-nine is actually gonna be SO three. Then the sophomore trip for twelve thousand six hundred and ten, the junior trip to Six Flags for thirteen thousand seven thirty-eight twenty-three. I was able to secure an additional fifteen passenger, fourteen passenger plus a driver, half bus, if we can use it for athletics, uh, that would give us a student activity bus that we would not require.
Is that brand new?
That's new, very new.
Good price.
Uh, it's, it's reasonable, I mean, considering we're paying about sixty thousand for a transit van, this would be a dual-wheel, rear-wheel, with a, we'd also have the capability of having a hitch on the back if we need to hotel.
Is that a pupil's plate?
Or what do you put on that? That would be, uh, livery blade, actually.
Livery blade?
Yeah, so we'll have most everything in that's green now.
Do we put seals on all these vehicles?
Seals?
The diamond.
On these vehicles, they'll be similar to the bus, there'll be one down the side, on the smaller vehicle, there'll be, uh, lettering, we either do it here, or we can do it at Baker's, but if we did it on Subaru, we did it on Ford Escape, but.
I mean, instead of putting all the lettering, maybe.
We can, we can just put the seal on the door, that's fine, yeah.
They can wrap the car.
We can, I mean, Mr., uh, Mr. Shao, he's started to browse too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and then, uh, the last item is for advanced manufacturing, these are for laptops for his shop, um, from retrofit, twenty thousand eight, twenty, uh, eight twenty-six ninety.
All right, need a motion to approve of all those expenses?
What's that made?
Yes, I can, all in favor? Aye. I oppose. Q, uh, transfer of funds?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it, if you, if you can make a motion.
I have a motion to accept as written.
Five thousand eight hundred and twenty-two available funds to come, oh, excuse me, it's not one hundred and fifty-five thousand, it's four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, oh, eight, uh, oh, six eighty, yeah, I just didn't change the header, I apologize.
On the second, pay it on the backside.
Four, five, eight?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Six, eight.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Thank you.
Uh, House Building Subcommittee Report?
Uh, we have any this one?
Contract has been, contract has been signed.
Oh, the contract has been signed? Very good, so that's, uh, for anybody that doesn't know, that's the, uh, a house that Diamond will be building next year, next August, September, in Swansea, off of March Street Development.
Report to us today, uh, was that, it was, uh, going smoothly so far, it was in order in that, um.
Yeah, so they're, they're moving right along.
Move right along in the contract. Here the contract is, that's all, it's all done, it's all signed. All spread away, all spread away, no issues.
Yeah, and then you got a copy of the, uh, projects that are going on. Uh, LPN Subcommittee Report, Mr. Dean, you have the report?
No report.
No report. Financial aid handbook, nothing in the report on that.
You posted approvals.
Yeah, what, what have we approved of though?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, she has an update here for her, for what we have, it should be in your packet.
You do have?
Yes. Yeah, I re, I reviewed it, it's, I mean, everything looks good, we're on course to where we wanted it to be.
All right, so we also.
The handbook is there, you're correct, and the stat up of the program.
And, and you went over it, it's fine?
Yeah, it looks good. Yeah, it looks good.
All right, so now we've got a recommendation to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five LPN student guidelines, I submit, need a motion.
Make that motion.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. And in the financial aid handbook for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, need a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Subcommittee Report, Mr. D, the power zero on policy?
So, everybody should have in front of them, the, Mr. Bentley, I left us a new one that was in front of you, cause I made a couple of changes, if you see underneath your, uh, little book that he left you.
Should have some red, uh, typing on it with some strikeouts, that you be on the table in front of you.
Yeah.
On that, um, nothing's really changed on the core coordinator, the, uh, food services is just the same, or whenever the contract starts to end. At the top, you'll notice they, on both of them, the twelve month and the ten month, uh, it does have a revision that says unless otherwise amended by the board of the district school committee. The following be, uh, personnel policies of the twelve month and ten month, uh, individual contracts, so the, uh, if they wanna change anything, they gotta go through the, uh, through the committee. Um, on the ten month, um, just the, uh, as written there, the only change on this one, according to what you're seeing there, if you haven't got the red ink, is the time that the, uh, uh, security guard comes in and leaves. Um, and the special chair, uh, will be just seven to three, uh, that's special education team chair, excuse me, and that would be seven to three, not seven to three thirty.
Nothing else?
Nothing else, everything else is.
And all references to any other contracts, uh, have been removed?
Yes.
Is there's no cross-reference to any other contracts that was in the prior, and that's all been removed?
All right, the recommendation to approve the revised policy GDB one, non-union employee contracts, as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Principal Report?
I wanna thank, uh, the, I wanna thank, I wanna, you know, say congratulations to our students, our staff, our faculty, our, our whole community for the third time in school history and for the third time in four years. Uh, we were rated as one of the best high schools in the nation. Um, and why this one is, is extra important and special, I mean, I think we've seen across the state, uh, the effects of COVID and the pandemic as, as we emerge out of it. Um, schools drop, and every other fall or every year, schools start a decline in ranking, while Diamond jumped twenty-six parts. So we came in again, number one in the city, one eighty-two in the state, incredible for a vocational school that has half the time to deliver curriculum than comprehensive schools. Incredible job to our faculty, staff and students. End of the year events, you see them there, uh, tomorrow we have National Honor Society, OVS on Thursday, uh, National Technical Honor Society, which we'll talk about in a little bit, next week, prom at the Atlantic Resort, um, at the Wyndham Hotel in Middletown, May thirty-first. And awards and graduation, gonna be exciting end of the year to celebrate our students.
Are we gonna hear questions, comments? No, see you none, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Superintendent Report, Mr. Bentley?
I have it outlined there for you, with the admissions, enrollment, cooperative education report, did you wanna start on, uh, school competitions, where we continue to succeed? And the NEASC, which we're very happy to report out, that the NEASC collaborative conference took place April twenty-nine and thirty, uh, we have not received yet the final report from them. Uh, we had a verbal exiting report, uh, and he did make comment that, he was amazed at was how the students do not use cell phones in this building. He is a principal of another high school in the western part of the state, uh, and he made a special comment saying, we don't know what it is with the students, but he says, we didn't see anybody using a cellphone, but you were out in the building. And there was a team of eleven people, and they were very impressed with that, the respect that the students had for the building, uh, and for the faculty and that. But we'll get the full report, so that's just a little snapshot. Uh, I do wanna point out on cooperative education, uh, if you look at the figures provided by Mr. Mar Sisson in the second pack, batch of it, and it starts off with, Dear Mr. Bentley, Mr. Rabello, members of the committee. I asked him to do, um, a report of where he was when he came in on my tour, and he broke it down on this page right here. He has been most active, uh, he's doing a good job. Other than that, admissions is still going on, enrollment is still maintaining, we're losing some students and we can't replace them that time of the year, uh, other than that, we're in good, overall, school's in pretty healthy shape.
How many have been accepted next year?
Three eighty-five.
Before he accepted those?
Oh, yes, they've already been accepted.
Re-confirmed?
They've got, yes, and as someone drops out, which is happening, is that they immediately hop on the phone and they get the next person on the, on the list, that's their I numbers to get them in.
But they'd say Westport?
They're getting Westport to Westport, Somerset, Swansea, and Florida, they're going right by the ratio, and they have that list.
When, when is the, um, uh, freshman night that the parents and students come in?
Until school begins in, uh, September.
Oh, I thought we did it, uh, the.
The student night or the half student night?
The student night that we had, that was it. I'm sorry, the accepted student night?
Yeah, we had that, I was here.
I thought you meant the night where we detail all the.
That's what I'm talking about.
The, the night where we all either present or we do that, yeah, that's not until school begins.
Okay, thank you.
That was well attended last year.
Great, just, just to that point, um, transfers, uh, in our admissions policy, uh, we do accept transfers for grade ten and grade eleven by July fifteenth, so we'll follow that same practice.
Have we been accepted then, which one?
We haven't, no, they have until July fifteenth to be accepted for grade ten or grade eleven.
Oh, I see, cause that's incorrect.
All right, great, um, we're up to W, calendar events, have a list here, um, can we, we, we have this in front of us, next year when, when people are scheduling events here at night. Can we make sure that they're scheduled around our dates and so we don't have to keep changing our dates here?
Yeah, okay, so, the May one is always the same as OVS?
Always.
Always, so if we can.
We can't, we can't change what the state tells us to, cause that's in Worcester.
That's the Worcester one, right?
No, no, the one that's.
Our, our.
Let me move our school community to this.
Not this one?
Yes.
No, actually this one was, was the May because that was.
You're talking the one that's coming up on Thursday, is that right?
That was, that was the April one, you know.
Now, this is, we moved today because of Thursday.
Oh, yeah, right, right, but I think we did in April as well, and that's the state.
State sets their thing, but we can, we can work on that.
Yeah.
And another question on January, that was the third, Thursday of the month?
January sixteen.
Oh, wait. I think I, let me just, let me just, let me just take a look.
Uh, we're talking January of twenty-five, right? And you take, that's the, that is the third Thursday of the month, cause it goes two nine sixteen.
So I kind of just followed the twenty-four, twenty-five school, uh, school calendar, um, and based on events I didn't think were there, um, I didn't check on that, I didn't confirm.
Yeah, I didn't look at that.
Yeah, cause I went based on the school calendar.
You're looking to move that to the second Thursday?
That doesn't matter, I'm just saying, like, I just, I'm like, your calendar for, for me, I realize it was not the second.
My schedule's way too far out, my schedule's way too far out, I don't know when I'm due next week.
All right, and, uh, first Thursday of the month, graduation is scheduled for, uh, June four.
Uh, for next year.
Next year, yeah. And that's why it's on the fifth versus.
For this year.
For next year, right?
Both.
That's the first Thursday.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Uh, and again, we have to change it this year to Wednesday only because, uh, Jersey High School was graciously allowing us to use their field, they have an event this year on Thursday.
All right. If we can, with, so, I know sometimes it's difficult, we get everybody, uh, together. All right, you got the calendar events in front of you, like, uh, Mr. Bentley said, Thursday, this Thursday is the outstanding vocational school. And the last day of school is the seventeenth?
Yes, so the reason why the January meeting is scheduled on the third is because there is no school on January second. Because next year.
Two weeks for a vacation.
Correct, correct. So there's no school on January second, which is the first Thursday, the second Thursday is, we're back, just back from school vacation, so then it got pushed out to the third Thursday.
So since they moved to the sixteen, four of us are gonna be in Florida, so you're gonna have to come to Florida for that meet.
I would know.
Why not?
We have all this.
So do we, do we wanna bring it back?
Do we need to bring a nurse?
Six.
Do you wanna bring it back?
Bring it back to the second Thursday?
Want to do that?
There we go. But you won't be here.
I'm gonna, yeah.
What?
No, the, uh, the ninth is fine, the sixteen will be the one, I'll work on.
We can bring it, we can bring it back to the second Thursday.
Are we talking about January?
I know, right?
Why do that? That's, that's fine with me, as long as everybody. Scheduled.
It makes no difference to us, it's, it's the committee's pleasure what you want.
Okay.
Second one's fine.
My schedule's gonna change ten on January now.
The ninth of January?
Ten, that's it?
At least, at least.
All right, correspondence, we have one from the Westport Fire Department, everybody should have a copy.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
You may have had a paper, I will there, uh, other items?
Oh, yeah, okay, do we have that kind of thing?
We do, we do have a field trip that just occurred because we had two of our students from welding who did, uh, win an event, uh, with over one hundred schools and two hundred participants. Two of our welders won a sophomore, won a junior, uh, had each won an all expense paid, uh, competition trip to Wooliesport, Pennsylvania. When they're going, and they go in the week of the, uh, June eleventh through June fourteenth, they are going down, it's being sponsored by the national competition of the manufacturers. There's a couple of analogies in there, uh, but I did send out an email, metal fabrication welding, uh, but the, so we're talking a sixteen-year-old sophomore and a seventeen-year-old junior have won.
Awesome.
Now, those are from the United States, two of them are here at Diamond, so.
And who's going with them?
Uh, their teacher, Mr. David Salcina, he's their welding instructor, he's the same one that was working with the, uh, young man who was going for the world competition to compete in France. So, uh, he didn't make that, but he was very happy, he beat Ireland and some other countries, uh, but he worked with these young people there, and they have proclivity for a good skill set, and they won. So now they're gonna go show off their wares in Pennsylvania, yeah, yeah.
So I, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make, I'll make that motion, approve that deal, sir.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oppose? So, moving on, correspondence, we have one from the Fire Department at Westport, uh, whatever, thank you, uh, our next school committee meeting is June thirteenth, and we have a.
We have a reason for executive session, soon can assume general chapter thirty, except in twenty, paragraph two, conduct strategy sessions on preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions. Or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, individual employment contract, body bid, director of diversity, equity, inclusion, director of extracurricular activities, and social media. Peter Beatrice, uh, security officer, Joe Brilliant, district, uh, district treasurer. Stephen Cooney, paraprofessional, Stephanie Ferrell, I believe that's not gonna be heard, it's on the agenda, Stephanie Ferrell, human resources coordinator, Karen Glover, district data analyst. Uh, Mr. Kitchen will not be heard tonight, Lisa Leone, food service director, Joseph Moncistin, cooperative education coordinator, Bethany Manti, special education team chair, John Assisso, divisional continuing education director. Mary Elizabeth Perry, parent liaison, Melissa Patrasso, Akalman, Mark Rabello, Akalman, excuse me, assistant technology coordinator, John Rosta, division of continuing education, woodkeeper. Doug Swa, security officer, Kobe Silva, technology assistant, Erica Teal, lead security officer, Patricia Tonan, paraprofessional, Joseph Alonti, uh, carpentry teacher aide, also, professional matches, general law chapter thirty, section twenty-one, eight, paragraph two, discuss gratitude with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, which is, or declares, which it does, um, that will be asked me, DAA and DTA negotiations.
Okay, we'll, uh, we will, uh, we'll.
Uh, we will be, we will be coming back out into open session because we have two agenda items, which we have to deal with.